Let me go, I'm going to my office and start changing them. All right? I'll go do one at a time.
Testing, testing.
You want me to start with the end of the admin report, right? I can start it.
Yeah, I can just do it. I'll just do it by part.
Sorry for delay, everybody. Having little board docs updates going on at the same time, but welcome everybody to our May Board of Education meeting. Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'm gonna start with the roll call. Starting from my left, Mr. Scott Ashrin, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Ms. Laura Newman, Associate Superintendent of Business and Operations, Ms. Dana Schultz, Board Trustee, Dr. Bill Hender, Board Vice President, Dr. Jordan Cox, Superintendent of Schools, myself, Steve Hartman, Board President, to my right, Ms. Sue Herman, Board Trustee, Mr. Tim Russo, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Ms. Mara Harvey, District Counsel, and Ms. Debbie Verga, District Clerk. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Cox for the budget hearing.
Okay, so, good evening, everyone. Before we get started, Mr. Russo is gonna take us through, not yet, Mr. Russo, so, sorry. Take us through some of our summer programs that we're really excited to share this evening. But before, I just wanted to make a quick remark regarding a medical incident that transpired in our high school last Friday. I was with my team in my office and the rave alert went off, that 911 was called at the high school, and at that point, you typically hear, maybe somebody fell, maybe somebody's having an allergic reaction, but shortly after that, I got a, my phone started ringing from one of the administrators, and I immediately knew, because the administrator sounded like they were in a rush, a little out of breath, asked if everything was okay. They said they had a staff member who went down. Without getting into too many details, what transpired that morning in that high school as a result of the staff of that building was nothing short of a miracle. The staff of that building jumped into action, and it was, and we went right over there, and we watched firsthand. I'd also like to take a moment to thank the Comac Volunteer Ambulance. So there are a number of individuals that are going to be invited to our June Board Meeting to be recognized. We sent them letters, we also sent a letter to Comac Ambulance Corps, and the Board of Education would like to recognize those individuals for their heroic efforts for saving a life that day. And I have to say, our schools are not just a place of work. They're a home, they're a family, the staff treat each other like, like their loved ones. And so it was just to watch that that day, and to come back in the afternoon, and it was a faculty meeting that the high school had held to share an update from where that individual was in the morning till that afternoon was nothing, again, short of a miracle, and if it wasn't for the staff of Comac High School jumping into action, it could have been a very different outcome. And so, we're really looking forward, the Board of Education is looking forward to recognizing those individuals in June, it's on June 5th, so please tune in if you have a chance, and again, you know, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for everything that you do, the staff, on a daily basis, because it doesn't go unnoticed. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cox. Yes, again, as a board, we were informed of all the updates, and, you know, we really wanna thank everyone really involved, and that's why we wanna go out of our way, again, on the June meeting to recognize those who really went into action that day, and really, like Dr. Cox said, it is a miracle that all the stuff that they did, and we're very positive about all the good stuff that we have to come, so, thank you, everybody, on behalf of the board as well.
Absolutely. Thank you. So at this time, we're gonna transition into our admin report. I'm gonna ask Mr. Russo if he could please provide a quick update on our summer programs.
So, as Dr. Cox said, we're looking forward to all of our summer programs this summer, our Discovery Camp, our Cougar Camp, and of course, our Music Camp, so if you haven't had the opportunity to, please take the time to register. Thankful to all of our faculty, our staff, our administrative team that helps to support this, it's a large undertaking, and it starts back in December even, and everybody starts to put things together, and it's an awesome experience for our kids, and a great opportunity, again, to just kinda bring our families together at our schools, which is one of the things we look forward to the most. One last quick announcement, this Saturday at 10:30 on radio on station 103.9, some of our students and staff will be featured on Bob Vecchio's Spotlight on Long Island Schools. Natalie, Luke, and Cassidy, three members of our Legislative Advocacy Committee, will have the opportunity to kind of, they took, they got recorded about a month ago, and they spoke a lot about their advocacy efforts and their recent trip to Albany. Once again, they made us all so proud in how they were able to handle that spotlight, and just all the insight they have into what they learned through that experience, and all the great things that our Legislative Advocacy Committee does. So they'll be joined by Dr. Cox, and Dr. Sannarello, and Mr. Biagi as well, so we're looking forward to hearing that, so hopefully, everybody can tune in. Again, 103.9 at 10:30 on Saturday.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. I think there's one more slide that shows some of our summer programs. Again, this will, this presentation will be on our district website, so if you have any questions about the summer programs, this will be posted after this evening's presentation. At this point in time, we're gonna jump into our budget hearing. I'm gonna ask Mrs. Newman to take the stage.
For the last time?
Here, here. We still have a few more.
Can you hear me now? Oh, much different. All right, so tonight is our state mandated budget hearing that is done in public. We have done a number of presentations over the past two months to review quickly, I've promised. Tonight, we're just going over the numbers, we won't be talking about all of the wonderful things in the budget. Those presentations, as well as the entire budget, is on our website, so we ask you all, please feel free to go on, review it, there was a lot in this budget for everyone. In a nutshell, the budget that is being placed up for vote has an increase of about $5.9 million. The associated tax levy increase, we are not piercing the cap, we are staying at the cap, which is 2.29%. That's something that the board has never pierced or gone over, so we're proud to be able to do that, and offer all of the items that we have in this budget. Very quickly, going over our revenues, which we have done numerous times, so I thank you all for your patience, but there is one change, we actually got a state-approved budget a little over a month late, but we did get it, those state aid runs were released last night. Happy to know what the number is, cannot say that I am not disappointed in what the numbers are. Overall, Comac is receiving $14,508 more than what was in the governor's proposed budget. In the revenue slide, we have made that adjustment, as we have spoken about previously, any increases that we received with an approved state budget, we would be obviously showing that increased revenue, which you'll see on the first line of state aid, and with that increase, we are lowering our reliance on fund balance and reserves, and that has been reflected here, so that is a slight $14,508 change. Presenting the budget in a three-part format, which all school districts must do, you'll see the breakdown, 73% of our entire budget is going towards the programs and services to our students, the remaining 16% and 11% is broken down on the next slide as well. Again, there is no change to this slide, because again, even though we're getting more state aid, $14,508, we are not making any changes in that amount to the expenditure side of the budget, so this is the same slide that we have presented a few times. Again, the tax levy increase is 2.29%, and the related budget-to-budget increase is 2.62%, and I think the key for us is to ask all of our residents to please come out and vote on May 20th for the budget. The polls are open 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. You're welcome, Mrs. Verga. And again, that is the only barometer that the superintendent and the Board of Education and all of us in the district have to ensure, are we giving the community what they expect and what they want? So we do ask everyone to please, at some point during that day, just come either to the middle school or high school, depending on what your polling place is, and let us know. That concludes the public hearing for the state budget of '25-'26.
Thank you, Mrs. Newman. At this point, we're gonna open it up. Any questions from the Board of Education?
No questions for the sixth meeting, but I guess, get a general statement, we know that part of the governor's budget was the passing of the banning of cell phones in schools, which as everyone knows, good ban and different, is another unfunded mandate, which we had to figure out a methodology of implementing that without a policy being passed by the state yet so far, so, just letting people know, that was part of the budget passed, is part of the resolution, so, more to come on that.
Yeah, so I will just share that we're still waiting for the official final word on what that's going to look like. Comac is not a place that just reacts, we don't make decisions haphazardly. Yes, I'm sure, you know, many parents or community members are wondering, or students are wondering what this is going to look like. When we get to that point, we will be putting a committee together, we will be discussing, you know, what this could look like for September, and there will be plenty of advance notice to our community on what this is going to look like. So at this point in time, we're still waiting for official guidance on exactly what those requirements are. Typically, when something like this comes out, some of the organizations will provide sample policies on what that could look like, but again, we are not a district to react, so we're going to take a look at all of the information, and we will be putting together guidance for our community, but it's going to take some time, it's not gonna happen overnight, so that's our update right now, at that point, at this point.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman.
You're welcome. Any other questions from, Ms. Newman? Oh, universal free lunch as well, yes. That, that, yes, the universal free lunch was also passed as part of the, but, and I don't know what the, we don't, we don't, again, don't know the impact of that, which is another unfunded mandate, as we've gone through everything, you know, it's great, it's very good, but how much is that gonna pay out of our budget? We don't know, so, more to come on that as well.
For business.
All righty, so there are no committee reports, so we'll turn it over to Dr. Hender to read the Board of Education statement.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. Our board meeting has two opportunities for public comment, one where the public can comment on specific agenda items only, and one at the end of the meeting where the public can comment on other school district matters. Please take a white card if you have a question on specific agenda items, and a green card if you have comments during public participation on other school matters. Comments must be no longer than three minutes. The district clerk will call each person up by a number. We are monitoring the time, and will let speakers know when their time is completed. When called up to the microphone, please state your name, and whether you are a district resident, please only speak to the board directly. The board appreciates the community's feedback. These commentary periods are not times for public debate or for answering specific questions where a direct answer cannot be provided. We will make a note of any questions where the answer is not known, and provide a response as soon as possible to the person asking the question. Public comment does not allow for positive or negative statements about a specific employee as it relates to his or her job performance. Any matters related to specific students will not be discussed. The president shall terminate the right of any speaker if they are overly lengthy, repetitive, disruptive, disrespectful to anyone, and/or offensive, as well as if the public becomes unruly and lacks respect for others. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hender. I'll turn it over to Ms. Verga for comments on specific agenda items only.
That would be if anyone has a white card. Anyone, number one, white card. Nope, okay.
Okay, I will continue then. Moving on to the next section, which is correspondences, we had three correspondences, and they all were responded to accordingly. Moving on to our next section, which is donations, be resolved that the Board of Education, on behalf of the district, donations by the following to be applied as requested, and be a further resolved, the district will deposit these funds as listed, and be further resolved that the board authorize an increase as necessary to list the budget code for use, for use of these funds. Number A, from the BURPTA, of a donation of $25,000. Number B, for the Greater Comac Chamber of Commerce, a donation of $500. Donation C, from the Comac Gridiron Booster Club, for a donation of $5,370, and last, from the Amy Rose Gabrienne Foundation for $200. I get a motion? Second?
Second.
Discussion, again, on behalf of the district, a really huge thank you to the BURPTA. Again, very excited about this very nice donation they provide in the district, and we're really excited to hear in future board meetings of how this BUR student union will be put together. So again, really big thank you to all out there for the BURPTA, for putting such a large donation to help out the district, it is, that's a tremendous big effort, so we wanna thank you.
And something else that is on there, Mr. Hartman, is the Comac Gridiron Booster Club. That donation that they are providing is for the donation of rental lights for Friday Night Lights Football. Hoping that this will be the last time that we have to rent lights for Friday Night Football, or for Soccer Under the Stars, or any future events, so, you know.
Part of the budget, this year.
Exactly.
Any other further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. I get a motion to approve the minutes from the April 15th, 2025 Board of Education meeting? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried? It's coming up. Can I get a motion? Come on. Can I get a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
Motion.
Okay, I believe there's three people in the audience, I'd like to notice, who's here tonight, Kira, Rochelle, and Brittany, who are all becoming probationary teachers here, who will be appointed tonight, so if you're here, please stand and be recognized. Congratulations, welcome to the Comac family. We know you'll do some great things here, and so, happy to acknowledge you tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Moving on to our next business, a motion to approve consent agenda items as presented and/or amended 2 through 12. Can I get a motion? I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. There is no consent agenda legal. Moving on to the first item for resolution tonight, which is a long one, and, but a very exciting one, so. Whereas the Superintendent of Schools recommends that Melissa Baldi be appointed by the Board of Education of the Comac Union Free School District to a four-year probationary term as elementary principal, assigned to Northridge Primary School, an annualized salary of $163,041 minus applicable withholding and deductions, whereas Ms. Baldi possesses certification as a school-building leader, now therefore be resolved that upon the recommendation, the board hereby appoints Ms. Baldi in accordance with Education Law 312, to a four-year probationary period in the elementary principal tenure area, commencing on July 1, 2025, and ending on July 30, 2029, at an annualized salary of $1,630.41. What, $163,041? Sorry, this is a long one. 163,041, there you go, sorry. Lots of reading here, thank you to the legal, so there you go. Minus applicable withholdings and deductions to be paid by the district funds, and be a further resolved that nothing in this resolution be construed to limit an unfeathered statutory right of the school district to terminate Ms. Baldi for any statutorily and constitutionally permissible reason while she remains in a probationary status. If there's any spelling bee, how to do that as part of elementary school, I don't know how that would even work. That's a lot, but again, can I get a motion? I get a second?
Second.
Again, she lights up the room, she's lighting up right now, Ms. Baldi, so we're really happy to have her in the district. Again, go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Ream. I know, it's just tough on Ms. Ream.
Melissa, welcome to Comac. As the Castle President for the administrators, we welcome you. You have a wonderful group of support, and you're going to soar. As the outgoing principal of Northridge Primary, ride the wave, it's a beautiful place, it's a very fine place, and we are excited to have you come. We wore our spirit wear, so you would know what it feels like to be part of the Comac family, so on behalf of the primary principals, we welcome you to Comac. Congrats.
Mrs. Ream said you have very big shoes to fill, right? You have very big shoes to fill, but you have a, you have a great staff here in Comac, so we're really excited for you to be part of the district, and we're very excited for all you're gonna bring here, and all, you know, it's just, your smile and presence is just, is grateful to have you here, so, thank you for that. Yeah, and Ms. Ream needs more tissues, there, exactly. One of many she's gonna have from now till her day, so, but yeah, again, thank you again on behalf of the board, I don't know if anyone else has to say anything before. No, no, we're gonna vote, one of the board has any more comment, but if not, all in favor? Aye, motion carried. Is there any other resolutions? Yes, but I don't have a. Of consent, thank you, okay, moving on then, thank you. All righty. With that, I'm gonna acknowledge the following, a statement of professional services from Lewis Jones for the month ending April 30, 2025, and acknowledged from BSK for the month ending March 31, 2025. Continuing along, acknowledging receipt of the March 2025 financial reports as listed. Acknowledge receipt of internal claim orders monthly update. Acknowledge receipt of the Committee on Special Education dates as listed, as well as acknowledging receipt of the Committee on Preschool Education dates as listed. All righty. So, the Board of Education of the Comac Union Free School District shall hold its external audit planning meeting on Monday, this isn't on Monday, again, May 15, 2025, at 6:00 PM. The regular meeting will be held on Thursday, June 5, at 6:00 PM at the Comac High School, One Scholar Lane, Comac, New York, is anticipated the board will make a motion for the purposes of adjourning to executive session at this time, and at 7:30, we'll reconvene the public session for the purpose of holding this regular business meeting. However, there's two other meetings we have to acknowledge here, there is gonna be a board meeting, so when we do have the vote on May the 20th, as mentioned by Mrs. Newman, there is a regular board meeting that will take place on that, right after the vote is completed, to acknowledge the vote, and to make sure people are aware of that, so that will happen on May 20th. There's also an executive session that is being held on May 22.
So it's a public board meeting?
Public board meeting, but followed by an executive session.
The board will adjourn into executive session.
Right, and it'll come back. Anticipate of any public comment, correct. Correct, that is correct, thank you. Lot of ad-libbing, thank you from legal counsel. There you go, so a lot of more, even though budget season is over, still more meetings. So, and again, the meeting in June is gonna be a great meeting, which is held at the high school at 7:30, it's all the acknowledgements throughout the year, and different awards, and take a lot of pictures, it's a very good time, so we're very excited to be having our next meeting in the high school in June. With that, I will turn it over to Ms. Verga for participation.
Mr. Hartman, before we go to public participation, just wanna take a moment, and, you know, this is Staff Appreciation Week, and wanna thank everyone, from our administrators, to our teachers, to our nurses, to all of our clerical and custodial staff, buildings, grounds, everyone who helps make Comac such a special place. Keep doing what you're doing, 'cause it's a great job, and it's well-appreciated, so thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Hender.
So if anyone has a, any comments, there is a green card, and that would be green card number one. Any comments at all? Oh, here we go. Thank you. Please state your name.
Good evening, all. Name is Joe Endrickson, President, Comac Security Guard Association, Dr. Cox and Board of Education. I wanna thank you for giving us the equipment to make that save last week at the school. The AAD was definitely in place, and very important to have on scene. I also wanna commend the entire team at Comac. Carrie has our statement, we are CHS, it was never more prevalent than that last Friday. We drain, we train, we drill, never have a situation like that occur in my time here at Comac, which is almost 11 years now. All the units in the district came together that day, which was amazing. Our custodians, our nurses, our initial first responders into the scene, and I also wanna commend our students. The students were fantastic, thanking us, responding to our directions, we made some changes, obviously, with the situation going on, we rerouted the buses up to the top of the circle, kept the bottom circle clear for the emergency service personnel, and they did a bang-up job, I'd say, unbelievable. I had parents, obviously Friday is a busy day for us, and I'm kinda the captain of the ship and the front desk at the high school, we had parents trying to get kids out of school, we had to shelter in place for a reason. I can't tell you how many thanks we had from those parents. It was quite a testament to this team here, to see Jordan, your team up at the high school supporting us, our administrative team doing what they do, training us to be the best we can be at all times, quite a testament, very proud to be a member of the Comac community. Thank you very much, guys, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Any other?
Any other green cards?
Alrighty.
That's it.
Alrighty. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn the meeting. Wanna go back to exec session? I get a motion to adjourn into exec session, discussing employment's history of a particular individual. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
I get a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Everyone have a good night, and we'll see you in, soon.